Council Agenda. Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of February 16th, 2021. Introduction, posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020, whereas remain posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on December 22nd, 2020 and was voted by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2020. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and also are available for viewing at www.parcipity.net. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to you for the flag salute.
Thank you, Clerk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, now I'm going into the roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney Jim Lot and CFO Juan Uribe. Council President, I have a quorum, may I begin?
Please.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings on March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM, the agenda meeting, and then March 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, the regular meeting. Under approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting of November 24th, 21, and the agenda meeting of December 1st, 21. Motion to approve the minutes, please. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Moving along to presentations and reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk. Um. Let me start off with this. Reading of this proclamation that I have. Recognizing February's Black History Month. Whereas as a community, it is important to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans in the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political arenas. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter "Goodwin" Woodson, a noted Black scholar whose parents had been enslaved, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week in February 1926, choosing the second week in February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was recognized by President Gerald Ford, who took the opportunity to honor the often neglected and overlooked accomplishments of Black Americans. And whereas in 1986, the US Congress, in a joint resolution of the House and Senate, designated the month of February as National Black History Month. In his 1986 Presidential Proclamation, Proclamation 5443, President Ronald Reagan noted that the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. And whereas in his 2014 proclamation, the first Black American president, Barack Obama proclaimed, "Every American can draw strength from the story of hard-won progress, which not only defines the African-American experience, but also lies at the heart of our nation as a whole." And whereas, the Black History Month theme for 2021, Black family, representation, identity, and diversity, explores the African diaspora and the spread of Black families across the United States. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate Black Americans who have overcome the scourge of slavery, segregation, racial prejudice, and a multitude of other injustices, and who despite these obstacles have made significant contributions and huge advances in such areas as education, medicine, art, culture, public service, economic development, human rights, and many more. And whereas during Black History Month, we call our attention to the continued need to confront and fight racism, engage in meaningful and sometimes uncomfortable conversations on issues of injustice, and work towards the ideals of equality, freedom, opportunity, and prosperity for all. Now therefore, I, Michael Soriano, Mayor of the Township of Parcipity, Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month here in the Township of Parcipity, Troy Hills. And I encourage all citizens to join us in listening, learning, and celebrating the diversity and character of the Black community as we continue building trust and creating a safer community in the Township of Parcipity, Troy Hills, where every person feels welcome. Um. On the heels of that, I have to um now make just some other reports. Right now, our COVID numbers in Parcipity, um, they stand at 3,171 cases. Uh, this is a mark in about 130 new cases in the past week. Keeping in mind that last week, we had a rise, the week before that, it was 135 cases, it's it's taking a slight dip. Let's see how this trend goes. Uh, let's, let's, let's see how we are, I'm. Um, we were talking earlier and I heard Councilwoman Greg Nanny saying that she was praying for the best and I certainly join her in that. Um, in Morris County, keep in mind that we've had 72,332 first doses of COVID vaccines I have been administered to county residents. And out of those 72-plus thousand, uh, there's about 30,722 people have received their second dose. Okay, and are on their way to a, a, a good vaccination at this point, once a couple of weeks pass from that. So, um. It's about 54% of that is the Moderna vaccine, 46% is the Pfizer vaccine. Now, we keep in mind that the total population of New Jersey is about, well, oh, well, I mean, in Morris County, sorry, is, um, 491,845 in Morris County. We have about 14% of Morris County residents have received their first shot and 6% have received their second shot. We're not there yet. But when we keep in mind, uh, in New Jersey in general, we have about 11% of our 8,800,000 uh, residents in New Jersey have received their first shot and 4% of New Jersey has received their first shot. Morris County is doing a little bit better than the average. Um. This has been a very long 11 months and we're going on to a full year on this soon. And um, I'm just hoping that uh there, this will be a brighter year for us and uh being on the heels of Ash Wednesday, a time of atonement and reflection, and uh, it being Mardi Gras, I'm certainly hoping for better days ahead. Um, that concludes my report. Mr. Council President, Clerk, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may please, uh, the testing center at the Knoll is going to be open beyond the 19th this Friday?
It, it will not, uh, Councilwoman, uh, it will not, it'll be closed this Friday. For, this Friday will be the last day. Okay, we weren't getting the numbers there for testing to justify the state being there. Uh, needless to say, I am disappointed, but I'm grateful that we were there for the time that we were there.
Okay, do you know the, the 131 cases, the new cases for this week? Did some of them go to the testing site at the Knoll or were they at other locations?
That is, uh, I, I, I can't, I can't reveal that information, number one, because I don't have it. And even if I did have it, I, I wouldn't be able to give you that type of information.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, there's Janice McCarthy. I, I wanted to check and see if there's any contact with the county or the county health board or any health organizations about getting vaccines for seniors in the senior apartments in Parcipity. You know, Brookside Management was successful in working with Riverside Medical to get vaccinations for residents. They got about 80 residents at about 240 vaccinated and then Riverdale was unable, ran out of vaccines and was unable to get, get more. I recognize that there's, that we have a shortage of the vaccines, but is there any assistance that the town could, um, could offer to help Brookside or continue the program that we started with Riverside Medical? I know that some neighboring towns have set up some programs for seniors. So I was wondering if our health department might be able to reach out to, uh, uh, you know, the county or the county health department and see if we could, uh, could get some help here.
Well, as, as far as I understand, the county is the lead agency administering the vaccine throughout Morris County. Um, but I can direct the, uh, the Business Administrator to speak with the, uh, Health Officer to see if we could start something like that, but I, I, I will say this, Councilwoman, um, you know, I, I am very hopeful and at least the way I see it is that things are going to change once more vaccines become available. I mean, we, we, we have not vaccinated that many people, well, I mean, we, uh, in the United States, we're, we're long off and it's, this need for the vaccine is not just here, it's everywhere. So I have, um, let's just say that I share your frustrations on this and, um, we let the Department of Health know that here in Parcipity, you know, because of, we did this as a testing location, that we are ready and we stand ready in Parcipity to serve as a vaccination location when it justifies having enough vaccines given to Morris County. Right now, you know, there, there's, there certainly can handle it over at the Rockaway location. But if they ever become overwhelmed because there's so many vaccinations and, and, you know, so many people coming, Parcipity stands ready to be a secondary spot.
Yeah, I know, but, but you know, again, I go back to the fact that these seniors have more difficulty getting the appointments because I don't think they're skilled, you know, with, with enough with computers and it, it takes a lot of effort and time to scour these sites for any registrations for vaccines. And I understand the call center, the wait times are over an hour at the call center, so, you know, there's no help for them there, there either and, um, so, you know, I don't know, you know, I understand that in some cases, they've got, they've had volunteers, uh, some younger people volunteer and kind of help, uh, some of the seniors get, uh, registered. Um, I know at Brookside, we're willing to, uh, have transportation ready for them. So if there's anything that we, that can be done, um, I certainly think that would be helpful.
Well, uh, Councilwoman, I'd be more than happy to, uh, work with you on, uh, starting a program like that, I, you know, it, uh, I'm not sure exactly what you have in mind and what program you're talking about, but if you want to set a meeting with, uh, with my office, with Business Administrator Carr, and, uh, we could sit down with the Health Officer and see what we can come up with, I'm totally open to that.
Sure, I know that we had volunteers, citizens, volunteers to call seniors in the beginning when this, uh, when it started. So I mean, I, maybe by that same, uh,
Well, I, I will say that our, our senior center, our current senior center is doing what you're describing right now with seniors, I mean, it's, we're not doing it by, you know, by certain, uh, locations, they're, they're calling and they're helping them and they're helping them sign up the best they can.
Yeah, well, that was my point last time when we spoke about this, if we could, if it were possible to try and get clinics or mobile clinics for these, these.
Well, you know, we looked into your suggestion of no mobile clinics. Um, our Health Officer was not admirable to that because the vaccine itself is very fragile and a lot of the, you know, like a mobile bus, the technology to keep that cold and, and, and what it takes to, it can't be moved around the vaccine, it's, it's fragile, it's delicate, so it has to be at a stationary location from what I've been told. So, uh, I don't know about the mobile locations, I, you know, I, as far as I understand, they're all standing locations.
Yeah, well, you know, Johnson &amp; Johnson is coming out, I think that's a little different, different vaccine, so hopefully there'll be something there, but even sites in town, I think we talked about maybe the Senior Center or PAL, the, the PAL, uh, maybe establishing something too. But, you know, sure, I'd be happy to work with, uh, with anybody. Something like that up, I know they did it, I, I'm not sure whether it was in Chatham or Madison, but they did get young people to volunteer and, and, uh, work with some of the seniors to set up appointments. I really think we're disadvantaged, so, well, that's.
We could look, we could look into that, and by the way, we vetted the PAL for a testing site and that didn't work out because of, you know, traffic and the activity that the PAL is anticipating having coming up soon and, uh, there were concerns. Um. The Senior Center at the Knoll, you know, the Senior Center that's near, you know, that, that's in the Knoll Park, that's probably the better location, it may be on the far edge of town for some, but it is a good spot. Um, the Knoll Golf Course is what we ultimately used, it was suggested by the Knoll Golf Superintendent, very, very wisely, because that building's vacant and it was a lot safer and it was available parking for, as a testing site. If we go to a vaccination site, that could be completely different story. But thank you, Janice, please do me a favor and, uh, can you call Business Administrator Carr first thing in the morning and let's set a time where we can set, where we can talk.
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the Township Council, I'll turn it over to, um, Council President Mike DePiero.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, anything else from any members of the Township Council? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the Township Attorney. Jimmy, there?
I know.
Okay, thank you, Jim, uh, moving on to Business Administrator Fred Carr.
Hi, dear Mr. Man, so I just real quick, uh, with regards to the council, bringing everybody up to date, if you will, on the budget conversation we're having in administration down the hall and putting our data together, I had hoped frankly, to be able to present the council their reading material by the end of this month, your bullet, uh, your budget book, so that you could go through them and ask questions and we could set up some meetings, but, uh, the complexities of the budget have prevented that and, uh, we're hoping to get it to the council as soon as possible in March, so the council can have it and introduce it and we can start having those those conversations between the council and they're getting everybody on the same sheet of music. I do apologize for being late, but last year was an interesting year, I'll say the least, and from the budget standpoint, it has bled over to this year. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Have a, uh, thank you, Mr. Carr, moving along to the Township Clerk, I don't have a report, uh, moving along to the Township Office and Committees, do we have anything? Council President?
Uh, just one in case it comes up tonight. Uh, the the roads that we keep, we have residents coming and we don't know who owns the roads up in Glenmount Commons. That's going on and on and on, it's been a continuing saga for months. Um, but I asked the question a while back.
Years, sir.
Who's know, months? Who's plowing the roads? Turns out the township is. Now, if the township is plowing the roads, that's, I'm assuming we own them or we wouldn't be plowing them. We need to get an answer for that question, so we can address the condition of those roads. It's been dragging on way too long and it's embarrassing.
The Council President, I, I actually received a memo last week from Special Counsel who's taken a look at the issue. Um, I have a closed session discussion for the next meeting with myself, uh, and, uh, and our Special Counsel to address your concerns.
Answers or just more delays?
Now, we'll, we'll be able to present, uh, what the Township's position is, uh, and then there, there are some discussions we need to have internally with council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, moving along to Correspondence, none, going on to bids taken, January 20th, 21, wealth 14 emergency generator, February 4th, 21, one new 2021 classic cab, 22,000 pound GVW with crane reinforced utility service body. February 10th, 2021, Lake Howatha water main replacement, phase one rebid, February 11th, 2021, one new 2001 Doosan portable power air compressor with running gear and accessories for parks and forestry to be taken, um, February 18th, 2021, reconstruction in various streets in Mount Tabor, phase six. And March 4th, 2021, Baldwin Road sanitary sewer modifications, for future proposed qualifications, none. At this time, I'd like to enter in a motion to open up a public hearing. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open now to members of the public, you will be given five minutes to speak on any matter, once, uh, we have 30 seconds left, I will give you a warning of the time almost being up, but in addition, please remember this is not a back and forth session, you will address your questions or concerns and thereafter, either the council or the administration will go ahead and address them. Uh, with that being said, let's go ahead and take a look at the participants. Okay, I don't see anyone's hand up at this time, okay. All right, now I do, I have, uh, Mr. Ram Kumar Sridharth, can we please, uh, unmute Ram, please?
Um. Good evening, everybody, um, my name is Ram, I live in, um, number four Autumn Bridge Road, I'm part of the Glenmont's, um, community. Uh, I've been attending these calls for the last six months, um, and, uh, I really appreciate, like, you know, before, just before, um, like the last five minutes, I think you discussed about, uh, the Glenmont roads and, and we really appreciate, uh, that you are discussing about it. Um, the main reason I wanted to, um, come and attend this meeting is, um, we've been coming to this meeting for six months and, um, and we have also, through our Glenmont Association representative, we also reached out to, uh, to you guys. Um, so what, what we wanted to understand is, um, this is a big community, um, a lot of people live here, um, and, uh, and these roads are quite important because these are like, you know, since it's a busy community, there's always traffic going up and down and there are some places where the roads are not that, well, you know, they're not in a good shape. Um, and we've been trying to understand why, uh, the roads are not in the position of the, uh, uh, of the township. Um, so I just wanted to understand, um, where we are, last month, when we attended the council meeting, we were asked to provide a list of, uh, the roads that would need to be turned public, um, and we have provided that information as well, so we are trying to help um, or provide whatever information that you need, we are able to provide that. But we just wanted to understand where we are, where is it and, um, within terms of, uh, you know, turning this road public and can we have like some kind of a date, when do you think it was practically possible to have this road made public, you know?
Okay, so, thank you, uh, thank you, Ram Kumar, anything else?
No, that's it from my end.
All right, fantastic, thank you again for your comments, if we can please mute, Mr. Ram Kumar Sridharth.
And Council President, may I? Council, Council President, may I?
Yeah, I had to unmute, yes, Jim, please.
So as I explained earlier, uh, we, we, we have a memorandum and the research results that we'll prepare to discuss with council in closed session at the next meeting. I would assume following that meeting, probably in the, the, uh, second meeting in March, which I believe is 16th, we should be able to make a public presentation, uh, but I, I, I need to consult with council first in closed session about what the op.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, the next person we have with their hand up is Vamsi Pundla, if we can please unmute them, please?
Thanks, Khalid, uh, thanks, dear council and mayor and administration. Um, this is Vamsi from Glenmont, uh, it's about the same issue, I don't want to repeat what Ram said and, uh, first of all, I would like to thank uh, Mr. Michael Di Perio, Piero, to, uh, for bringing this to the attention of the, of the council meeting and following up. Um, we want to understand if it is required, we will be ready to attend a closed meeting with the, uh, administration uh, uh, from our HOA unofficially, because we are representing not HOA, but we are having our place 1,500 residents, which includes people from our, uh, uh, HOA as well as members who are not in HOA, uh, with single family homes. It's a huge community and we are really, really concerned, uh, to know the status of these roads. So we are ready to attend a, any internal closed meeting that, uh, that we will be invited to and I'll be happy to bring along with Ram, other people, uh, other leaders from this community. Uh, this is a statement, uh, but we are really concerned, thank you.
Thank you, Vamsi, for your comments. Um, all right, so at this time, I see Nancy Di Eduardo with her hands up, so if we can please unmute Nancy, please?
Hey, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, Nancy, good evening, how are you today?
Bud, how are you and hi, Council President and, uh, Council Members and Mayor, thank you so much for, for listening to our concerns about the roads here in Glenmont. Uh, I'm the President of the Glenmont Commons Homeowners Association, but also I've been a a resident of Parcipity almost my whole life in Glenmont for, for 20 years, so it's, um, a great concern to us that we ensure that, uh, the township take as good a care of the roads as we do of our own common area property. So I echo the statements from Ram and from Vamsi, we would definitely, um, encourage that we have a closed session with the Council President and anybody who chooses to be present to discuss, um, the status of the roads and how we can, um, work collaboratively, excuse me, together to resolve the issue that we have here at hand, um, with the maintenance, so it would be greatly appreciated. They're a pretty, pretty sorry state, the roads, so. And that's all I have.
Just so we're clear on this, right, we, we cannot have the Glenmount representatives meet in closed session with the entirety of council. Um, my, my approach would be that we, we discuss the matter internally with council, allowing council to seek legal advice so it understands what are the options are with respect to the Glenmont Road Network. Once we complete that discussion, we can then have a public presentation about what the options are with respect to Glenmont.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jim, for the explanation. Uh, do we have any other member of the public that would like to speak? Okay, I don't see any members hand up, so, um, thank you, Nancy, thank you, Ram, and thank you, Vamsi, for your comments, if we can please have a motion to close the public hearing, please? Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call. Mr. Carriffy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed, moving along. Uh, going to ordinances, uh, introduction, ordinance 2021-02, approving an easement agreement with Fox Run Developers LLC to allow the Township to own, operate, and maintain certain sewer line facilities and a sewer pump station. Ordinance 2021-03, amending chapter four or five, vehicles and traffic section 23, stop intersections of the Township. Ordinance 2021, a call in 04, approving an easement agreement with Putting Stone Developers LLC to allow the Township to own, operate, and maintain certain sewer line facilities and the sewer pump station. Be a resolve that the above ordinances be introduced right by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parcipity, Troy Hills, held on February 16th, 2021, and that said ordinance be further considered for second and final passage at the meeting to be held on March 16th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinances. Be a further resolve that currently authorized and directed to advertise said ordinances with notices of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-02?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Carriffy, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes, could I please have a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2021-03? Make a motion.
Second.
Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Carriffy.
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
May I please have a mo, a motion passes, may I please have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04?
Motion, Grignani, second. Ms. McCarthy.
Motion made by, uh, Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. uh, Carriffy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving along, a second reading in public hearing, ordinance 2021-01, amending and supplementing at chapter 290 parks, recreation areas, and public lands, Article 1, motor vehicles, fees, section 290. Article one motor vehicles fees, section two ninety dash four, no country club utility fees in chapter four forty five, chapter eight four forty five fees compilation. Section eight four forty five dash thirty seven, no country club utility of the code of the township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey. The notice for the ordinance of it was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township Precipity Troy Hills, on January twenty fifth twenty twenty one. The ordinance was introduced at the January nineteenth twenty twenty one regular meeting. Can I please make uh, a motion to accept that ordinance twenty twenty one be heard in its uh, second and final reading?
Motion, Grignani. Second, McCarthy.
Motion made by, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, moving along to the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty one, uh, colon oh one. Can I have a motion to open up the public hearings for this ordinance, please?
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public to speak on this ordinance only. I will go ahead and look at the participants. To see if there are any participants for this ordinance, only for this ordinance. Okay, I do see uh, Vamsi's hand up. I don't know if that was from the previous. So I'll just unmute him for a second, just to, uh, so there are no mistakes here in the event that he does want to speak on this ordinance for uh, for the fees. Can we unmute, unmute Vamsi, please? Okay. It appears that um, that was a mistake from the previous uh, open, open uh, public hearing. So go ahead, can I please entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second, McCarthy.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, uh, floor is closed. Where the above ordinance is read in title and reading and here they're on. Therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion to approve the above, the above, please?
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to the non-consent agenda. There are none. Moving along to consent agenda. Be it resolved, all items that are routine and controversial by the township council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member still requests, in which case that will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Motion.
Hi, uh, this is Janice McCarthy. I just have a question. Did we resolve the issue that uh, council president uh, Di Piero brought up about moving the soil and the uh, restricting the trucks uh, traveling on Precipity Road? Did that get solved?
Yeah, my understanding was the, the, the times uh, that we had mentioned were correct. I believe our BA was, or maybe our, the township attorney was talking about Precipity Road being a county road. Here, here respective, we still control the routes that they take. Littleton Road is a county road, Precipity Road is a county road. So no matter where we direct them, we directed them onto county roads. So I believe that uh, Mr. Lot's contention uh, was moot. We, we will recommend that they go down Precipity Road to two eighty seven um, and not through Precipity, Littleton Road, which has so many schools.
Okay.
I was able to speak to the township engineer as well as Mr. Carr about this uh, after the meeting. Um, we, we have legal authority um, to require the um, the routing of trucks, as you indicate. Uh, the, the hours of uh, truck movements are regulated by the township uh, uh, construction ordinance, which I think allows construction to begin at seven AM and conclude, I believe, at either five or six PM.
No, we have never allowed that. We've always required uh, that we do not interfere with commuter traffic in the morning and, and bus traffic in the morning. That has to start after nine or nine thirty.
I think we should probably talk about this uh, in closed session. We don't have legal authority to do that.
We've been doing it for many, many, many years.
It's not what the township engineer told me.
Okay, um, so with regard to the consent agenda, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Carriffy. Can I get a second, please?
Second, McCarthy.
Motion made by uh, Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Uh, how are we, are we approving all of them? Are we holding off on the um, on the uh, the number that uh, Mr. Lot and Mr. DePiero, Councilman DePiero have been discussing? The time maybe has to be changed. Why are we approving this particular one for the soil, soil removal? Can we hold that off? Take off number two?
If the council likes, absolutely. They could. Uh, that's up to the council. That's a council decision.
Well, I, I think until it's resolved, just as Mr. Lot has, has expressed, maybe we need to talk in closed session in regard to this, because I remember being on the board of adjustment and we never had times at six o'clock at night for the trucks to traverse on certain roadways.
Okay, uh, so Ms. Grignani, are you making the request to remove this from the consent agenda? We can do this.
Please.
Okay.
Second.
So uh, we have a request by Ms. Grignani to uh, remove this from the consent agenda. We're gonna basically hold this until the next meeting. Um, and we had a second from Mr. Carriffy. Is that correct, Mr. Carriffy?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so just so we're clear for the record, uh, motion made by Ms. Grignani to remove this, the resolution art twenty twenty one to thirty four to table. It's a motion to table uh, this, and it was seconded by Mr. Carriffy. Um, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? You're on me, okay?
Yes.
Um, Ms. um, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to table art twenty twenty one dash thirty four is passed. With that being said, that we'll go back to the motion that was made uh, to approve the consent agenda made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. We're gonna go into a roll call with that one. Uh, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Uh, moving along to the approval of payroll and bills list. That's F O one, recommend authorization for payment, number one, authorizes payment of the February nineteenth twenty twenty one. Regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at one point six, one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And number two, payment of bill vouchers from voucher list of February fifteenth twenty twenty one to February seventeenth twenty two, twenty one, which is two million thirty nine thousand five hundred and eight dollars and ten cents. Can I have a motion to approve the also authorization for payment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by uh, Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on to the executive session. Before we begin the executive session, uh, Mr. Lot, do we anticipate any um, any action? Okay, um, we don't anticipate, uh, Mr. Lot, you there? Okay, I think he's muted, but at this time for the, for the public, we don't anticipate any action to be taken at this time. So you can either wait, we're gonna, we're going to make a motion into adjournment, we'll be back when we're done, but if you'd like, you can log off now. So with that being said, executive session resolution, we're at open public meetings act PL nineteen seventy five, chapter thirty, two thirty one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas a township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas a township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privileged information regulation of the B O I O B in public establishments, attorney-client privilege in contract negotiations, and potential acquisition of sixteen thirty three Littleton Road. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes will be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the township council of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero? Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so now we're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session. We're back in open session. Could I please have a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion.
Second.
Who made that motion? Who made the first motion?
Janice.
Okay, uh, motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Carriffy. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Everyone have a great night and we shall.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.